You can take my place on the front of this.
Okay.
I signed. Very, very.
Oh. Okay, okay. We're gonna get some air. Yes.
Yeah.
You know.
You were sending these. Let me. He ordered them. He's in my mind as well. He didn't. He did those pages. I was. I got some papers. That's what I'm reading. She's like, my. Yeah. You did so long. It's that I'm. From Edwards. Here we go. That's true. Well, yes, it would be hard. It's eighty-five. Okay. For something I have.
I think five.
Okay. Yeah. You know. You're getting to think about. Yeah. It's like. Right. I'm. I'm. Yes. I was. Six of them will be at our house. I'll say, oh, yeah. Yeah. I'm. 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 We don't have. And now you could have one. We're. I'm. 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 We've got a lot of people. It's. It's. Yeah. We're. We're. I'm. 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 Yeah. You're coming up. I'm. I'm. Well, what if not? What if later? And you. You know, what's your plan? And that's a good question. I'm. I'm. But it's. They're watching. They're here. We're actually there. But for a long time. It's. So it's going on. Yeah. Long. It should be. The. I'm. There. Yeah. It's. It's. I'm. 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 Sorry. No. No. I hope they. I'm. Again. I'm. 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 Shouldn't. I'm. 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 You're. Right. That's. I'm. Because. I'm. I'm. I had no idea. Because I'm. I'm. Not. You're. I'm. 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 All. Me. When we want to start with the. We'll. I'm. I'm. Yeah. Yeah. Please. I don't know. Let me grab a sheet before we start with you. Yeah. Well. Thank you. And then they give me one. They. You're. 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 In. With. Sure. You're. It's. Me. Do you want to sign in? Actually, one. But. Yeah. Oh, well. Yeah. We'll. Be.
Two million. Say. We're. We're. Play. Play. Yeah.
You're. You're. Really look fast. They out. They were. Um. And. I would. I'm. Doing. I'm. 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 Right. I'm. Right.
They get out. He's all three. I'm. Sure.
Next.
Oh, what's. Good. Well. Yeah.
I'm. That's. Great.
I'm. Listen.
Or. There. You're. You're. Oh, you. Are. You're.
Okay. I'm. I love. So. So.
Are we? I'm. You.
No. Yeah. Can we go? Please. Yeah. Uh, five oh two. I call this meeting to order. Well, let's see. For our agenda. Uh, we will start with a roll call, please.
Chair Annie Davenport.
President.
President Lydia Dunn. Because she would not be here. Commissioner Thomas Palm.
Present.
Commissioner Tamara Robertson.
Present.
And Commissioner Chris Sagnier.
Present.
Thank you.
We have a forum.
Yes, sir.
Outstanding. We will begin with public comments. Um, the format for the public comments, it's not, it's not a public debate or a public conversation. It's public comment. So it's kind of one way from the public to, uh, the, the P and Z. Um, our team staff over here will, will help facilitate as far as keeping track of time. So this is your opportunity to, uh, stand up and voice. I've got a few things to read first. Um, so I'll read through those, um, and, and then I will just go again in the order that people signed up. Okay. Number one, this is from Maureen Melee. And she says, or he, I'm sorry. Dear P and Z and City Council, we are opposed to allowing above-ground pools in the city of Wood Creek. We feel that these pools do not fit with, with the aesthetics of the neighborhood. Thank you, Maureen and Patrick Melee. The second comment is from. Looks like Joseph Lindell. And, um, is it this section down here?
Yeah. Right. All right.
Perfect. Uh, please note our opposition to any city ordinance in any shape or form which authorizes any above-ground swimming pool construction. Number one, the city already has an ordinance in place prohibiting any above-ground pool construction, and we're sure that it was passed for very good reason. Number two, currently there are quote "critical drought restrictions" end quote signs from the Hayes Trinity Groundwater Conservation District around, around Wood Creek requesting thirty percent less water used. Number three, Jacob's Well Aquifer is so depleted that the pool can't be used by the public anymore, and our aquifers. Our aquifers already stressed out as well. And number four, lastly, above-ground pools are unattractive and adversely affect property values. We also ask that the city secretary read this objection into the record at any city meeting concerning any above-ground pool ordinance, as well as reading it to any assembled audience there if possible. Thank you for your time and consideration in this matter. Our aquifer and property values and the preservation of them are very important to us. Okay. The next one is from Lydia Johns, and she says, I have a couple of comments for the upcoming hearing on chapter one five six decimal zero five eight full on above-ground pool. This one is for the public comments section. Number one, during discussion, we have been focused on packaged versions of above-ground pools that are professionally installed. In watching some episodes of HGTV, it became apparent to me that there are other formats for above-ground pools. Sub bullet one, in one episode, a pool was constructed using a shipping container. Obviously, this would be different than the packaged version and would have to be constructed differently. Sub bullet two, another episode featured a pool constructed with a stock pond tank. Both of these would meet criteria as the ordinance is stated at this time. Still subject to inspection during installation, but also a whole lot harder to remove, especially the shipping container. I would like to see this discussed and allowed for specifically not allowed. Maybe in the form of above-ground pool construction must be in the form of easily removed material. Sincerely, Lydia John. The next one is from Summer Quentin. Summer says, hello. Please say yes to above-ground pool. I like that one.
Yeah.
It does always show.
I know. We.
Nor. Uh, Sherry Lynn Lamro. Maybe. My. Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, okay.
No.
A picture says a thousand words.
Pictures attached. They're. Page.
Well. Good. Yeah. The picture says a thousand words. And then she quotes drought condition critical conserve usage by thirty percent end quote. How does approving above-ground pools accomplish conserving water? And then the, uh, picture. This says, public hearing above-ground pool, June seventh, five o'clock, City Hall.
And in the background.
Gotcha. And in the background is.
That you're.
Critical. Right.
That's so true. We're actually forty percent.
Okay. The next, next one is from Sally England. Sally says, hello, I am unable to attend the meeting on the seventh at City Hall. I would not want a above pool next door to me. Too much noise. I would lose what privacy I have. I have lived here for twenty-nine years, comma, do not know what the restriction was back then. There were no pools above or in ground around my house back then. Sally England. Okay. And the last one is from Ann Bee. Ann says, I am so very disappointed that this issue is even being discussed when, as we all know, have been under strict water restrictions for years. The issue should be, in all quotes, I'm sorry, in all capitals, banning construction of all pools. I am ashamed to even be associated with all of you. Suzanne, are there any other comments that were sent in?
No, sir.
Very good. We will move on now to the public comments. And we will start with, looks like Nancy Britner, read first.
I was. Sorry.
Congratulations. You have the floor.
I've been to win the prize. I just was like, I was gonna yield my time to someone that's not here to speak. So I'm gonna say a couple of words. I agree with letter number two. We do not need above-ground pools. It's going to cheapen our neighborhood. You could spend up to sixty thousand dollars putting in an above-ground pool in. Or they look lovely, but it's not for this neighborhood. It's gonna change the aesthetics totally. We don't need that. We're in a drought. We've been in a drought. We're gonna probably stay in a drought sometime, and we need to help our aquifer. You can ship the water in. You can buy the water from our protect it, and they'll bring it to you. Comes out of our aquifer. So we don't want to do that. Um. Well, she's against that. No. Okay. I'm done. No. It's, I think it would make the, the, the city tradie. And if people move here, which they should, because it's a lovely, lovely area, and we all love it, and we wouldn't have been here so long. Don't bring the city to us. We moved here to get away from the city. City's got all the amenities, all kinds of rules and things that you get to do. You don't get to do so much here. We're in rural Texas. And we need to keep it that way. We love it. That's why we moved here. Amen.
We have, uh, looks like Mike Weaver.
Uh. I'm Mike. This is my wife, Kristen. We're, uh. She's been. No problem. Bye. Um. We've been here four years. Uh, I have to admit, I haven't ever really got very involved in government of any kind. And I just, you know, I just wanted to be logical, and maybe that's my first mistake is bringing logic to government. I'm not sure. Um. You know, we're. My understanding, and, you know, I could be wrong. I don't know if it. Um, we have a, an ordinance in place. The ordinance already has uh, regulations against uh, these pools. Uh, we attended a meeting not long ago, uh, regarding, uh, the short-term rentals. There's already an ordinance against that. Um, and, uh, it's my understanding that, uh, there wasn't much of a movement here to, to, to bring this before, uh, council. Uh, like, I think it's one person asked to have a pool. And it's like, that's all it takes to stir all this up? One person? I mean, it seems to me like there should be some kind of a movement, you know? Maybe petitions and things. It's where, uh, it's important enough and enough people, uh, back it to bring it up into this. Uh, I, I don't understand why, uh, this is even being discussed. Because, uh, if there's already rules against it, and, uh, it seems like it should take more than this, you, you know, to, to, to even make an issue out of it. Uh, you know, I mean, are there, are there, uh, are there rules about how you bring something to council and, and, and get it discussed? And, 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 and then can council just override everybody? I, it seems to me like, uh, most people are against this. Can council just, council just overrule everybody and just make it? I don't understand it. So, you know, I'm, I'm, I know that, uh, I'm not here to discuss it. I'm just bringing up the issue that, you know, it just seems to me like it, there should be rules about how you bring things before council and how they're approved. And, uh, I don't know. Sorry, I'm just trying to be logical with it, but, you know, it seems like there should be more of a movement here, uh, for this to even be brought up. I mean, can't, can't, can't there be some kind of rule that says that, uh, hey, you need to bring a petition to council with this many? And I think that it should all be, you know, property owners. You need to have a vested interest in this. And it just seems to me like that, that should be, uh, what's required in order to bring all this stuff up, because this just seems never-ending. I mean, sometimes you're gonna bring up stuff all the time. That's probably against the existing, uh, regulations. So, I don't know. I don't know, uh, if everybody agrees or not, but, uh, that's, uh, that's our opinion, and our opinion is that, no, we don't need above-ground pools.
Mark is down for them.
No. You stand for them.
Okay. Thank you. Um, Renee Peters.
Hi.
Hi.
So I am a property owner here in Wood Creek. I live on a little road called Country Lane. Some of you guys might know it. Some of you may not know it because it's very small, very quiet, and I love it. Uh, we moved in a couple of years ago, and upon moving in, when we bought this house prior to, I fell in love with the neighborhood, fell in love with the trees, fell in love with nature, fell in love with this house. Uh, approach, tried to do things the right way. We were very transparent and then spoke to people. Uh, one of the things that I would like to do with the property was put a cowboy pool, uh, stock tank pool to work through terms. I was told right on site, no, those are illegal or not appropriate, and they're not allowed here. So be it. So when I saw that this, uh, was on the agenda, I'm probably in the minority here, but I wanted to come in and express my awareness and, and ideas for alternatives. I think someone touched on it in their email. Um, as far as an above-ground pool, it's not something that suits my lifestyle. It's not something that suits my husband's lifestyle. Um, so one way or another, whatever it may be. What I am here to do is to bring up an alternative that would not be that big and that type of pool, but it would offer something towards people to have for their children, their pets, themselves, to take a quick dip during the day. Um, it's not something that's gonna take up a lot of space. A cowboy pool or a stock tank pool, uh, ranges from anywhere from, um, six, eight, ten, or twelve foot diameter and two foot deep. So some of you may be saying, well, why would we even want something like this? Because I have three dogs. I don't necessarily want to take from the side first false, uh, because of being dogs off leash, altercations, possibility of bacteria. I work in the veterinary field, so there are some, uh, xenotics and things like that that I would be potentially, um, not sure about my dogs being involved with. This would give them a basically a human slash doggy pool to pull off in the summer. These pools, uh, can be taken care of and cleaned and screened, uh, just the same as a, a ground pool or an in-ground pool with a filter and a pump. Uh, so with some of, I'm reading through the agenda, some of the ideas of being able to have to do your, um, inspections. You could do inspections upon putting it in. They are above ground. Um, again, as I said, they don't take a whole lot of space. You can make them look according to whatever you feel. Urbanized, uh, boho style. You can make them country vibe. You can make them hippie style, um, and affordable. So if the person decides to sell the home, you can take it with you. Um, you do not have to drain these all the time. As I stated, you can put a filter on them or a pump, and it does the cleaning. Um, the one thing about these are they're aesthetically cute. They're not some plastic piece of crap. Um, sorry. That is just going on the, the property. They're galvanized still. And, um, again, you can, depending on what the rulings are and what your, uh, policies and protocols are, you can put, uh, stuff around them to make them more attractive. You can put, uh, pea gravel.
Think of, think of your final comment now.
Okay.
Finish strong.
Okay. So I am not opposed to the above-ground pools. What I am asking is that you would take in consideration alternatives like a cowboy or stock tank, because I do not feel that those should be, uh, dismissed because they're seen as a traditional, um, above-ground pool, because they are far enough.
Very good. Thank you.
Uh huh.
Um. The thing, Gloria Whitehead, is that what? Yeah. Gloria? Yeah.
Yes. Um, I'm just gonna take a, a moment. Um, several, Gloria Whitehead at Seventeen Pebble Road Lane here in Wood Creek. I've been a resident for twenty-three years now, and I've served the city in a number of capacities, you know, from getting a grant for this building so that we could have this building and served as, um, council member two times as Mayor Cryton and as Mayor Clyde. So I've had some of these process experiences on these ordinances and things coming before the council and before P and Z. I had read an article in a letter that I saw recently, and it was a letter from David Baker who happens to be here today. And it was discussing some of the issues of the water in the county, in the city area, and the importance of that. So I would just like to say that I want to give the balance, balance of my time to Mr. Baker, our water guru, if he would like to utilize that time. I would not want to read his letter because it basically spoke to most of what you're probably gonna speak about today. So thank you very much. I appreciate P and Z, by the way. We all do a great job.
Uh, let's see. Dot Cole.
Yes. I'm Nicole, and this is my husband, TJ Cole. And I realized that the meeting tonight is mostly about, uh, the pool issue. We're not here to talk about the pool issue, but what we do have to talk about does have to do with water conservation. So maybe it somehow is in line with what you're talking about.
Would you, I'm gonna give you the option. You can talk right now if you want, or if you feel like it would be more appropriate to separate it from the pool issue, we can finish the pool discussion, and then you can.
That would be great. Thank you so much.
Very good. Um, let's see. Joseph Smith. Yes.
Get out here so you can go look at it. Yes. I'm Dr. Joseph Smith, and I've been here a little bit longer than you guys have, but not as much as, uh, this lady has been.
Give me back a, for the door. Otherwise, the camera can't see you. The door right there. Yeah.
Um. Appreciate y'all being here. And I really appreciate you guys, what you guys got built to. Uh, I'm one of the group that actually want a pool. Um, and, uh, had I known I would have brought in the whole contingent from last night where we got about four or five different neighbors came up. So just as much as you guys, maybe I'd be, we can actually find the signatures or whatnot of those who've been here. And all of them are here a lot longer than I have. You might say, they're oldies. Uh, one of them actually has an above-ground pool that they grandfathered, and you couldn't even tell that he has one unless you peek above his fence. And he knows of another neighbor who's also the grand, or same thing. I myself, let's talk about that. I have above-ground pool in the past when I lived in College Station. Uh, and I've also met many people who live above-ground pool. The people I've actually met with them are not noisy neighbors. Uh, they pick fry in the pool. And, uh, as far as I know, I have uh, three of them who are real estate agents. And if you ask them, they, they see aim pool, whereas the in-ground pool or above-ground pool, uh, and I did the research myself, and I verified, it's neutral. There are pluses, the, the, for value for property, and there's, there are minus. But the great thing about above-ground pool is whoever buy the new real estate can just dismantle. That's all beauty of above-ground pool versus, uh, in-ground pool. Uh, we're very worried about our conversation when we first put it out. We, we, uh, we did mention, uh, that is a concern, but the drought won't always be with us. That's one. Two, um, the reality is new city constructions that been allowed by Wood Creek takes a lot more water than any above-ground pool. Uh, one of the gentlemen here who had above-ground pool for all twenty-two years, that's the original water. When I had my above-ground pool, we had the original water, the water is expensive now more than ever. You just don't dunk it away. And if you average over the use of that pool, five to ten years, that's not even an extra bathtub a month. So we're not talking, uh, about that. I am in favor of the city helping the neighborhood with, uh, our conversation. And I used to be with a z, their escape group, and maybe this city should think about, uh, having such a group here where they encourage homeowner or whatnot to transfer to their escaping. Uh, the copper is one of the biggest users, uh, of, of, of water. Uh, it's gonna be with us, but I don't think things like that tend to last forever. Um, the, uh.
That's your, that's your three minutes? Okay. If, if you have a closing statement you'd like, or if your wife would like to.
I, I do want to close the thing, and then she can finish. Uh, Wimberly, uh, our nearest neighbor don't have anything against above-ground pool. You drive around, you don't see above-ground pool ever. Very few people tend to take advantage of this ordinance. The same thing with Sam Marcus. Just look around. Party in difference. Thank you for giving me your.
Thank you. Okay. Nikki Smith.
Hello. I'm Nikki. Um, this is my husband, and we have three kids that are seven, twelve, and fourteen. And, um, we, uh, are obviously in favor of above-ground pools. Um, we do, uh, we are, we're respectful of our neighbors. We've talked to all of our neighbors about this and everyone has been fine with it. We've even talked to the golf course and they're fine with it as well. We do definitely value water conservation and that is important to us. There are already things in place to deal with water conservation that don't have to be part of the city ordinance. Right now that ban is a permanent ban. Once it's removed, we can still have water conservation measures that can be in place like outsourcing the water or anything to conserve that. And drugs do not last forever. Um, and we have fun, safe activities for children in the summer. We do not have a lot of, or barely any access for children to swim. If you're not on the, on the river or have close friends that is, you can't get spot for your friends to swim in this area. And you know, down across the creek, there's safety issues with the water right now, stagnant water. I wouldn't want my kids in that, in that river water at this point in time. Uh, we just, I think here's a couple of everyone here. We value your opinions and your participation in this process and the time effort that everyone's putting in there. And, um, we just would like a safe, fun activity for our children. Um, and. Uh, yeah. We just appreciate your time, appreciate your efforts. And we appreciate our children being able to do something fun and enjoyable to offer anything.
Thank you Nikki. Uh, Grant Buck?
Alright, um, first of all, I just genuinely want to thank you all for volunteering your time to do this. Uh, and I'm just gig pay, so. I really do. And also bringing up all the gather to have this option to kind of speak and, and I sure. So just wanna definitely, uh, thank you for that. Um, okay, I'm gonna do a little, uh, little something here. Okay, so I moved here from New Mexico nine years ago and my, my family moved here. We initially moved, uh, kind of moving to drinking springs. And, uh, one day we just took a little, you know, Sunday drive through Wood Creek and our family just fell in love. I can actually close my eyes and see it, right? Like, you know, the overhanging trees that were the old brick wall at the time, do you remember that? You know, a little pile of little golf cart path. You know, the crate murdles is green everywhere, the golf course, um, gosh, it was just, it's beautiful. It's still beautiful today. When I think of that picture. In my mind, a big blue above-ground pool just seems out of place. Uh, so needless to say, I'm not, you know, I'm not in favor of above-ground pools for our communities. Now, I will say, I do actually have a couple of kids at the house still. Uh, they would love to have a pool. They, they, I wonder if they voted secretly, said they have one, they might have said maybe send something in. Um, but you know, their opinions aside, I just, uh, again, the above-ground pool just do not fit the look of, of what we have here in Wood Creek. Um, and I will say this, uh, you know, cause I can hear myself saying this, well, I'll do it. I want my yard. Well, if you don't care about your neighbor next to you, uh, my question is, um, as far as the aesthetic of a above-ground pool. What about our biggest neighbor being the golf course? Right? Uh, and I just wanna quote it, and in an article published in the Wimberly View on April twentieth. Uh, city manager Kevin Roll spoke about WJ Golf Course and he said, they've been making a lot of improvements. It's always been a beautiful course, but they have really been updating the facilities. I agree with you. I, I can actually feel that they're trying. It's, it's really a good thing that they're doing there. And I'm looking forward to the improvements that they're gonna make. Uh, the article, by the way, was about an increase in sales tax revenue for Wood Creek. Uh, it's kind of in the math. Uh, and by the way, I'm not representing the golf course. In fact, I don't even play golf. I do enjoy to walk on it. It's, it's very beautiful. But I, I think about something to our biggest neighbor and source the sales tax revenue to keep Wood Creek beautiful. In fact, it's why we have other rules in place like fencing requirements along the golf course. And, you know, making sure it looks aesthetically pleasing. Uh, I don't have enough time to go through all the reasons. I could have done a bunch of research, like a job and. I didn't know, I, I wrote some bullet points down. I tried to have some, uh, some AI helping with these things. But I hope somebody else thought about, in fact, the flooring and the aquifer. Uh, enforcing these rules on a, in summary, uh, definitely, I just wanna keep Wood Creek beautiful for the residents, visitors, golfers. The way it was nine years ago and still today. Thank you all very much.
Thank you Maria. Uh, Shane, is it Honk?
I didn't want to speak. I'm just here to listen. Thank you. I wrote no.
Gotcha.
I just thought that's what I was doing, I was tiny and. It's gonna cross me off when I write something.
And then, uh, David.
How much in my time?
I, I just need all the time. I just, thank you. Thank you all for the volunteering for this, 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 and, and, you know, both perspectives. I think, you know, kids love getting water. It's healing. It's something, you know, wonderful to have. And I'm the executive director of the Watershed Association. I've been, I've lived here since nineteen eighty. I'm ETJ, not in the city boundaries, but we work on water, trying to protect the watershed. We bottle land around Jacob's Well and conserve that and turn that into now a natural area that's probably a part. And so that's been a lot of, a lot of the work. Um, obviously, um, when we're in this drought, it's a concern for everybody. See the creek diminishing and that's, the creek is the aquifer on the surface, right? So that's the expression of the aquifer. When we look at, um, what Aqua, Texas, you know, it serves Wood Creek, serves Wood Creek North and Mountain Crest. Um, last year with those thirty and sometimes forty percent restrictions. Um, Aqua overcome their permit by a hundred million gallons. So that man, in the city of Wood Creek, thirty-eight million gallons for what, what the restrictions required. Granted, uh, you know, Aqua loses about thirty percent of their waters through mine loss. That's a big chunk of that water, but that thirty-eight million gallons. I think focusing on, you know, some folks mentioned zero escaping, finding ways for us to reduce that water use. Um, if you took that thirty-eight million, you divide it over, is it about eight hundred homes?
Nine.
Nine hundred homes. So nine hundred homes, um, we'd all need to save about a hundred and fifteen gallons a day. Connect up with that thirty-eight million. Um, and believe it or not, you know, I think, I'm, you know, I think pools in this area are really hard sell. But it's, whatever the water use is, if somebody wants to use a pool, that they can stay within a boundary of water use. Um, but you know, you said evaporation, you know, you gotta cover those. And I think you all need to, you know, obviously create, have rules in terms of, you know, how these spots is developed, what's allowed, what's not. Safety, aesthetics, all those things are important. So, um, you know, I'm here really to talk more about just a more global issue of the water condition in general. And hope we can have this continue. We've been having a dialogue with the mayor and mayor of Wimberly and Michelle. And talking about how do we really get Aqua to be better stewards of their water? And manage that water for the benefit not only of the residents, but of the creek. Is it the same water? The water we're drinking out of our faucets, the same water was flowing down that creek. So that, that awareness is really big and important. But those strategies for can we use native plants? Can we use, can we reduce that water use? That's really, that's really what I'm here to talk about and how we do that. Um, the pool issue, um, I, I, I'm sorry, you guys have, have to, you know, go through this. Cause I hear both sides are arguing and you want to have a place for your kids to recreate. I would really love to be that creek because that creek is, you know, it's so, it's so special. But at the same time, you got, you know, you have your own backyard. But I also know the noise, I mean, it's a tough issue to figure out. And, uh, but I just think that we keep that water, the water use thing in, in mind. And probably ultimately move to some kind of tiered pricing on it. So we get up in high water volumes that we, that we have higher prices for that. And, um, long-term, um, you know, water is life, right? If we, we don't manage it well, all of our properties are gonna be diminished. And, um, I, I just feel like to make up that thirty-eight million for the city. Um, we've all just gotta cut back a hundred gallons a day. And most of that is outdoor water, I fifty to sixty percent. So, um, please, you know, call on us. Watershed is gonna continue to work with the city. And work with, uh, you know, both Wimberly, Wood Creek and, and Wood Creek North to figure out strategies. For how to reduce that water use long-term. Pool is a tough sell on that, but, uh, you know, I'm gonna leave that to you all to decide whether that is the right thing. But, um, just keeping that in mind as you, you, you debate this. Um, how do we, how we create a water budget that we all live with it? That's it. Thank you all.
Thank you David. Suzanne, is that all the comments for?
Yeah.
Okay.
The emails and what's under.
Very good. Um, we're gonna, we're gonna shift gears. We're still having the, the public comment section, but that was above-ground pool. And now Doc, you've got our undivided attention.
I have, thank you so much. Uh, again, this is my husband TJ. And we also would like to thank all of you that are here, uh, doing your volunteer stuff. And it's, it's really needed and we wanna thank you for being here, all of you. Um, we are here to talk about a subdivision. My husband and I own four and a half acres at the corner of Jacob's Well Road and Pleasant Valley Road. It is in the Wood Creek ETJ. And we are really preliminary. We want, we're here really just to introduce ourselves and introduce our idea. We are, uh, working with the county and the Hayes County and as soon as we have met with them, we'll be back. In the meantime, TJ's gonna give you a little bit more information and I'm getting a deal next week. Thank you.
Yeah, uh, great to be here. We did here before. Um, and, uh, several years ago. And I don't know if anybody here, um, the commission, um, remember a certain time, I see David over there. And David wasn't at that meeting. I'm really glad to see you here, David, because I think we're gonna see each other tomorrow at a fundraiser for Kathleen. Kathleen owns EIO Organic Farm. And unfortunately her well went dry. And, uh, she needs a deeper well and a water reclamation system. And, um, we met here a couple of years ago with a very different kind of an idea. It's not being done around the country very much, but it, 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 it was, uh, trying to fill a very, uh, uh, uh. Uh, pervasive need in this country for more reasonable-sized housing, particularly for people fifty-five plus. And that's where we were coming from. Um, we were going to develop cottage court. A development, uh, with small houses, which by definition are site-built homes on an individually-deeded lot. Just like your regular home, but that is only four hundred to nine hundred square feet in size. Uh, we were gonna build, uh, thirty-six of them is what we were proposing in a cottage court configuration. Uh, where they all face on three sides, a, uh, an open green space. It promotes neighborliness and walkability, the sense of community. And, um, I think that number thirty-six just really brings some people out, including David. Uh, it seemed like an awful lot to put in on that property, even though they were gonna be very small homes. And there was actually gonna be way more greenbelt area than, than yards and, and pavement. And even though the density in terms of how many people would be living there, how many cars they would have and be driving around. Was half of what it would be if you built conventional-sized homes. Uh, that number thirty-six just really bothers people, not on the council here, uh, but environmentalists and, and, um. And some other people that were concerned about, uh, water. And, um, so since then, um, I have spinal cord operation, COVID hit. Uh, you know, you guys were media on a regular basis and we had time to think about our concept. And we realized today that we've, and, and commissioners, that that was actually, it was an inappropriate. Kind of development for that area. That is, that is very environmentally sensitive. Uh, it's a beautiful spot and we wanna, we wanna, we wanted to, to, to keep it neutral. Uh, and, and so what we've done is we, we've changed our idea dramatically. We're not building anything there. We're, we're developing it into just eight one-half acre lots. With a kind of a rural feel. Uh, gravel driveway rather than pavement. And mandated water reclamation systems for each. It would be, uh. The name of the subdivision, if I can just read here real quick, uh, to be brief. Uh, the name of the proposed subdivision would be Chamber's Well On Clay. Uh, consisting of eight one-half acre lots that would be situated along a, a new street in Kuldestack. Um, the entrance subdivision would be a continuation of an existing street, which council back then. Uh, would, would, would like to have seen happen. The lots will be distinctly different in character from the existing neighborhood. Across the street from us and, and in most of the area. Uh, the, these, the fourteen, fifteen hundred square foot homes are one-eighth acre lots. So the lots that were proposing, uh, for the subdivision would be four to five times larger than those lots. The development would also have features to, to make it look more rural and expansive, uh, rather like, other than the rest of the neighborhood. And we'll have a couple of stone columns on either side of the entrance to further distinguish it. The important part of the development would be not only just the less density, only eight homes on four and a half acres. Uh, but also we would be requiring, um, native plants for all landscaping. And, uh, mandatory water reclamation systems for gardening purposes. We have, as Dot said, been working on this for a little while. We've met with Kevin and Suzanne. We've met with the county. We've met with the PEC. We've met with Aqua Techs. And in fact, we already have a commitment from Aqua Techs, uh, to provide water waste water services to, uh, that, those eight lots. Um, it'll be just one home, single-family home per lot, a minimum of fifteen hundred square feet. They, they would be upgraded exteriors made of, um, uh, stone stucco or wood siding or hardy plank. Um, so it would be a, a very attractive, um, addition to the existing community. Um, I don't, I, I believe you're, you're, you're familiar, of course, with Oak Orchard, um, oh, right across the street here. Uh, it's a beautiful development. It's, I think, fifteen or sixteen homes. But, um, they, they have zero escaping and, um, and water reclamation as well.
So TJ, that's your, thank you. That, that's five minutes. Um, but, but give me the punchline. What, what, what do you?
We, we, we just, we're just introducing this concept and, um, that's simply the only reason we're here. And we'll be back, uh, once we have, uh, gone further down the road of county and city. And, uh, we'll represent with the proper documentation.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, this hereby at five forty-five includes the public hearing portion of tonight's agenda. I'm sorry, the public comments section. I guess I went out of order just a little bit. So, so what happens in here, you all are welcome and invited to stay and look if you want. We're gonna conduct kind of our regular business of three minutes and then having a discussion. Uh, but it does not involve the public anymore. It just involves the people up here. Um, so completely, completely up to you. If you would like to, to vacate the premises, that would be a nice little thing.
Is it this discussion about the pool, about ground pool?
Yes.
Disregard everything that I just said.
Yeah.
Yes, public hearing, yeah.
Thank you all.
We just did our thing.
It is, it's not public hearing. You're right. That was, that was, there's a public comment.
So also, yeah.
I said for public.
Don't say it. We have to publish your order. You can publish later.
Okay, very good. Let's continue on. So that concludes our public comment section. Very good. We're now gonna move on to the consent agenda. The first item on our consent agenda is to approve the regular meeting minutes from May third. So that's pages three, four, and five in your package. If you would like to take a moment to review those and if you are happy with them, I would like to entertain a motion to approve those.
I move that we approve it for speeding.
Okay.
Jared Evercourt?
Hi.
Commissioner Palm?
Hi.
Commissioner Robertson?
Present.
Mayor?
Hi.
Commissioners on name.
All right.
Very good. That concludes the consent agenda. We will now move on to reports from officers and council liaisons. Um, Brooke Brummer is our city council liaison.
All I have to say is, um, June fourteenth is council public hearing on the same topic of above-ground pools.
June fourteen, talk to. Uh, Kevin?
I just want to thank everybody to show up, no matter what side you're on. I always like public input and always like to have a full council meeting. So thank you all for showing up. Uh, thank you all for participating in these meetings. I think it's very important for council and the committee to hear your opinions, which sometimes. It's quiet out there, but I know that everything's quiet. So I appreciate y'all showing up.
Thank you. All right, that concludes the, uh, reports and we can now move on to our regular agenda. So item number two of the regular agenda is. So item number two of the regular agenda is now to open the public hearing to consider recommending the city council the adoption of the ordinance. Um, so I, I don't know about y'all. We, we have a uh package here, our uh meeting package, and beginning on, it looks like page six is uh the beginning of the proposed ordinance that contains the whereas and wherefore and why not. Um, and then page eight, uh called attachment A. Gotcha. I officially opened the public hearing at five fifty. And then on page eight is the uh attachment A, which is the draft ordinance uh that's being considered. After that, they have um some of the uh local and state rules regulations regarding ground pools and how it applies. Okay. Can I open the floor to anyone?
Yep.
Would anybody like to speak?
I would.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a couple of questions about uh, and reading the agenda from a previous meeting where y'all talked about the inspections. And the staff answered your questions saying that the ATS, city engineer would be doing inspections in these pools. Should they be allowed? So that cost to the city, is that gonna be passed on to the homeowner?
Yes.
And since we don't have an inspector, uh, are we going to be paying ATS to come out every two years and look at those pools?
Yes.
And at who? I'm a city city staff. Is it gonna be responsible for seeing that that schedule is carried out?
Correct.
And taken care of?
Yes.
On each individual home?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and if I can address, well, I wanna address it here, but uh if, if you look at uh the agenda for next week, um, there is software um that's capable of doing that.
Okay. My other question is, nowhere in this ordinance or proposed ordinance do I see provisions for impervious cover. And most of our lots would not accommodate a pool of any kind. Uh, above-ground pools will be considered at a hundred percent impervious cover for the water surface area, fifty percent for the decking. You're requiring them to have a decking. So my question is, where and who do you think is going to be able to accommodate on their lots one of these pools? And why are we looking at it before we look at how many people actually would qualify for this? And my understanding is that unless we add joint to lots, most of our lots will not accommodate a pool.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. I, I missed the first meeting when you discussed this and, and voted in favor of receiving, so I'm sort of behind the curve a little bit, but once we jumping began here, I mean, this is a public hearing here, and I counted nine against and two in favor. It's a small population, drafted, but it is, it seems like we as a committee here are just going along with whoever drafted, drafted this and sent it to us and asked us to, you know, take a look at it and approve it without asking what our population living in, what, what we want.
Amen.
So I, I don't know how we got to this point this quickly.
That's, 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 that's an excellent point. That, that was one of the things that I was gonna bring up. And, and it turns out um that there is a communication issue, a flow of, of information um that's, that probably could be made better. So as P and Z chairman, I, I, I went to a city council meeting to present our FTR findings to city council. I had no idea what else was on their agenda. I simply went to present to represent P and Z's FTR position to city council. Well, it turned out there were a few people from the audience and, and, and many fans there, um, and one of the items on their agenda was above-ground pools. That was the first I'd heard of it. Uh, apparently city council, or, or at least council member Heinz and, and maybe some other people had already heard about it because they had already reviewed um some, some laws and come up with a draft ordinance. And just to be fair, the, the public that was represented at that city council meeting seemed to be unanimously in favor of it. It would have given you the opposite field. Wow. I don't want to, above-ground pools here. It is what it felt like to me. Um, but, but I agree with you. I, I don't, I don't know how that comes to the attention of city council. But, but however that happened, it came to the attention of city council. And then because it's a zoning issue, they, they on their own drafted a, a, an ordinance. And because it's a zoning issue, that has to be reviewed by planning and zoning. And so we were tasked, if you will, to, hey, consider this ordinance or, or, or look at this ordinance that, that were, that were considered. The city council was considering.
Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Chairman, may I interject?
Hold up just one second. I'm gonna roll right now.
Okay. Please pause. You paused that job.
I appreciate that.
Speak to that when you're ready.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Um, my, my concern with, with how the information, the way it showed up to P and Z was simply on our agenda. Oh, there's an item on our agenda, without any background information on what had already been done. So in our last meeting that you missed, we found ourselves saying, okay, well, we need to go home and review, uh, we need to review the laws. And we need to call Aqua Text and figure out why they're doing this. But similar to STR, we're kind of spinning our wheels for duplicating efforts because we have no idea what's been, what's been done already. Um, and we find ourselves in a situation where we can very easily make the recommendations to city council, who already has other information that we're not privy to, and can very easily say like, okay, well, thanks P and Z for doing that. But, but we had a reason for doing what, what it is. So to summarize, before I let Lori jump in, um, I, I, I think, I think we can do better, number one, with, with communication, okay? And then number two, I feel like, I don't remember who it was, I wrote it down, but I feel like that was an excellent point. I had the exact same thought. I was, oh, wait a minute, I, I I agree with you. I feel like we're jumping into um the, the nuts and bolts and the details. And if, i- if there were a vote, for example, like, let's have a city vote, go out and vote, and, and, and ninety percent of the public said, no, no, above-ground pools, then we'd be like, okay, well, we're not, we're not spending our time talking about this. But, but I don't think there is. I don't think that's part of our policy. I, I don't, I don't profess to understand our policy. But, but, but no one asked me about it. I, I, I didn't go vote. It just came up and the city council, and the city council passed it on the up because of the zoning issue.
Because it seems like somebody approached a city council member saying, I'd like to build a above-ground pool, but I really can't according to this. Can you help me? And then the city council passed somebody on staff to draft something, and I put it in our lap and say, we want to direct the staff. This, we can move on to it. The problem would happen, but it can be appeared to be how it happens. So maybe the city manager can explain why, why I'm wrong.
No, I, I'll explain the process. How, how, how this worked is that council member put agenda items on the agenda. Staff was not responsible for that, and we did not put together the agenda. It is city council's agenda. Um, one of the items was the uh above-ground pools. We did not have any information on it nor talked about beforehand. Um, it came before council. Um, and it was referred to uh P and Z, council's wish was to um get it done quickly. Um, they wanted uh yeah, they wanted it done quickly. I thought, a- and I agreed to it at first. Um, after me and Andy talked, I realized that it wasn't fair to you to try to hurry up and get something done. So that's why last week, uh, or that's why we didn't call the, the public hearing, um, we allowed you to look at the document. Um, a, 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 just a ordinance that we wrote up with some suggestions from council members. That can be changed by you or whatever. There is nothing set in stone on that. And y'all can change, and, you know, last week you weren't here. I think you're traveling, but, you know, they talked about uh the bringing in water, uh, maybe from a different aquifer and, you know, the inspections and all of that. So all of that can be put in our code or, or could be recommended to council if you, if you wanted it to be.
But that's the nuts and bolts. The, 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 the initial decision by city council, names unknown. Oh, now we're gonna have above-ground pools, so let's put together an ordinance. Where did, where did it come from and why did it come from there? And why it wasn't the public asked for that, for any, I mean, you, you send me across a document here, you say, look at the finer print here, if it had any changes. You're not asking us whether you think it's a good idea or not to have an ordinance about, about, about ground pools.
Yeah.
That's why I'm feeling that, what is the purpose of P and C if we are giving something like that? And just look at the finer print and then.
It is, it is public and zoning's uh responsibility to look at these documents or look at these issues. Study them. Talk to Aqua Texts. Invite Aqua Texts to come here to talk to y'all. Um, and, oh, he left. David Baker, great, great person to talk about water and conservation in, in, in the valley. Um, P and Z does a lot of the hard work, just like you did on the SDRs. I mean, you study it, you learn about it, you get, talk to people. It's vetted through you. You make the recommendation to council based upon whatever information that you've come through, whether it's one meeting or five meetings. You don't wanna send this to council? You can have another meeting on it. But one of the processes of passing an ordinance is having a public meeting and getting the input from the citizens. So this is one of the many steps that is required. Does that make sense?
I, I, I believe considerably, and Chris, you, you may know, or Kevin, you may know, but, but with regards to city council, I, I asked council member Heinz about this, and my understanding from what she said is that if a citizen brings up an issue in public comment, the reason I wrote notes is because w- we don't just ignore that, like, okay, thanks for your comment. Okay, what are you guys gonna talk about? We're, w- w- we, we have an obligation, when a citizen brings something up, to, to, to have a discussion about it and then to decide, okay, well, we, we, we heard that person, we spoke about it, we're not gonna do anything with it for our reasons, or let's, let's, let's do something about this. So, so again, I, I'm, I'm no expert, but I gather that someone approached one of the council members, either in a public hearing or public comments, or on their own. And, and that council member felt obliged or, or whatever reason decided that they wanted to bring it back, like, is how I think it came about.
Fine, sounds like. And just, you know, I, I counted the number two of who opposed and, you know, maybe and yes, and, and actually three of those that opposed didn't want in-ground or above-ground. So, you know, I know, and I think one of the things that I'm kind of rolling around my head after listening to y'all, because we wanna do what you want us to do, is that there, you know, there's, if there's one person that comes up and they say, well, why can't you have this but not this? Then that's why we're doing the, you know, this hearing. We haven't made a decision. Um.
Ben? Okay.
Good man. Sorry.
Okay. May I interject at this point?
You may.
So what we're experiencing with P and Z and with the public here in comments and in observation and trying to have our voices heard and speaking as a citizen now, I've been on this, that side of the, the, the dice many times. Somebody said, maybe it was um Commissioner Palm for just a little while ago, but this is a situation where you have the cart before the horse, and the cart before the horse is not the government and not a good policymaking position to be in. So the citizen, the first thing is, I notice, the first thing was that there was an ordinance proposed that was in the packet for consideration. And that ordinance was to allow uh, on, of, of, above-ground, above-ground pools, an ordinance to allow before there'd been any significant input from the community. Whether that was some person mentioned petitioning, some mentioned um, they didn't say the word surveying. But if someone came when I was at council, and when many of us were, many of us in here had been on the, in these positions, a council member didn't just come up with an idea from, and put it on an agenda, and then ask someone's staff to go create an ordinance, and then submit an ordinance to any commission to review, whether it's ordinance review or whether it was any of our committees. That's a back acts word's way of doing this.
I'll, I'll just say one thing. We don't, we don't know. Like, I, what I'm saying, I, I hear everything you're saying, and I absolutely agree.
I'm examining exactly what happened in this case. I'm not speaking general.
No, 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 but, but in this case, for example, council member Heinz, this was kind of her, her project as far as I know. Um, and, and I don't know because there was no flow of information. When, i- i- it seemed certainly well-represented at that meeting, and I have no idea if, if those people were just the, you know, four families in the room, or if there was some sort of survey petition. I, I don't know. There probably wasn't, but, but I don't.
Well, I'm not saying that it was, there wasn't, but I, I'm pretty certain that there was not a survey of our community on this issue.
Yeah.
We do have a comprehensive plan that never asked for above-ground pools. We did have um a plan for many, many years in advance. There was not an issue of, of above-ground pools being a priority of our community. There were roads, that was a priority. And there were parks and ice rink spaces, the beautiful property, you know, from the city. There was nothing about above-ground pools. At any rate, I know, I'm just saying that the, or, I think it's a back act or kind of a procedure that you're being faced with because you received an ordinance. Who drafted it, by the way? Where did that work? It's a, it's a proposed. Yes. To a barrel ordinance. Posses will come from? Who proposed it? Who wrote it? And how did it land in your packet? I mean, who did? And then instead of you all sitting and reviewing and making decisions about a proposal that landed in your packet with you, I think as a, well, I was on P and Z, but as a P and Z commissioner, I would've said, where did this come from? Um, what exactly are we expected to do with it? And I would've been responding back to council before I ever posted it to have a public hearing on it and start making deliberations. But that's just a point, not saying that you all, I mean, we're all volunteers in this dog. We just wanna do it right, and that's why Kevin is our manager. We looked at Kevin, and we looked at Suzanne, and we looked at our staff, the professionals. But they're also under, you know, the gun of being told what to do by council members. And individually, all council members now seem to have this ability to randomly have access to the lawyers and to the managers, and that was never a process. So if it's all in disarray at the top of, of the, of the heap, it can't be anything but a disarray as it comes down. So I have some ideas about what you could do, you know, about this item, which is not act on this ordinance and go back to the square one and see what the citizen's really want. Amen.
Yes, ma'am.
And I, and I relinquish my time.
Okay.
I wanted to make one comment, Andy, if you don't mind. Procedurally, when I was sitting as a commissioner, procedurally, what would happen should someone bring it to the council table, as you said, did happen, they would in turn pass it back to P and Z. And P and Z's responsibility as commissioner would be to do research, to take a poll, to have a public hearing, to come up with validation as to whether or not this, this commissioner's court approved, disapproved, and what their recommendation might be to council. Typically, in the past, that's the way it would work. Then when I sat as a council member, that's exactly what we did. We never ordered an ordinance before it came to P and Z. We never ordered an ordinance before it came to PNC. Exactly. And so this is, as Mr. Palm mentioned, getting the cart before the horse.
Yeah, and I have a question on, can just, any individual want a change? And and it will get to this point, this is a lot of time and money involved. And in your time, just from one person coming up wanting something changed and what's already been rules?
Um, I'm just gonna speak to the process. So this document, which is a sample, it's a, hey, this is how council's been thinking. Based on input from the citizens at that meeting. It's sent to PNC and PNC can do whatever they want with it. But all we're, this was our council's communication, basically. And this is what was discussed, is what the citizens that approached during the meeting discussed. We adjusted it, and we sent it to PNC. PNC, you can do whatever you wish, as your recommendation. And then you send it back to council. So that's that's part of that discussion, is the document is the decision.
Did we get the full document?
Yeah, this is, this is again, it's a sample, it's like, this is some of the thoughts are. And it's happens to be in an ordinance one that doesn't lock you into any decision to it, you don't have to. You have your recommendation, you don't, your recommendation be, yeah, but maybe this or whatever you wish to do. You know, may I speak again?
Please. There are lots of ordinances here, okay? And if we're gonna start looking at changing ordinance because one or two people approach. One or two people, city council, and spend all this time, whatever. What if somebody, what if I asked the councilman, the government, and say, I would like to build a carport, really? Can you please put put an ordinance together for that so I can real build my carport? Because that's against ordinances, right? Eh, or I can say, I wanna have a gazebo in my front yard, can you please put together an ordinance? This could, I'm grabbing, being a huge expensive mess if we have this procedure. I mean, if somebody wants to be built a a a pool, you have to apply for building law, right? So if it's an above-ground pool, it will be rejected currently, right? And the next step would be go to some other committee or something like that. But you know, we don't even know who councilman member Heinz source is really here. I mean, if she wants to build an above-ground pool, you see, I'm saying, it's easy to start thinking like that, this is probably not correct. But I mean, since we don't know any better, you think, oh, what if I didn't come from, you know, I mean. So, yeah, I think we should, personally, I would suggest without making a motion, that you table it and try to figure out if I have any public interest in actually changing this or other ordinances. Now, the other problem, which I'm only learning about is that the cities may have very limited authority to decide what we can and cannot do. And that we're really subject to what the state of Texas will decide. So maybe this is a moot point, maybe we need to wait until we get some more definite information from the legal council that we have eh eh about the situation. I mean, you know, are we allowed to make any changes? So, thank you.
Let me hold on one second. Kevin, what is, what 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 tools does PNC have at their disposal to poll the citizens? Other than holding a public hearing? Like, like, did we just volunteer to go door to door to an honor, or did we, that an email or like? How how do we, how do we know the 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 will of the people?
Why not do a survey, just like you did on SDRs and speed books and everything that we did three to four months ago?
So, that would be. That could be the interior recommendation. This is our recommendation, we would buy a survey.
We do have Survey Monkey, and so if you want us to do a survey for you, you can do a survey.
And it would emphasize out for the survey.
Ask the council to approve the survey.
You don't have to, you can, you can ask us to do a survey. Cause of email, there's not even email, yeah, I mean, I mean, we have, we already have Survey Monkey. We already have the, all we do is we just plug it online and send it out in our email box.
And and your, and your, in your use of that, um, is that an effective tool, like, do you get some?
Not everybody signed it.
I'm not, I'm not dating on the the surveys, I think they're skewed.
Yeah.
Personally, but you know, it's, what what do you, it's anonymous, I mean, it's it's on the computer, anonymous. I I just, I would rather listen and have more meetings with maybe a town hall or something in that. I mean, we've already had the public hearing. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I would just suggest that I agree with you on the survey issue because, you know, we have been in the seven twenty. You know, that those things happen. But I think the polling of the community is really important regardless of what, how you do it, except I think the town hall is great.
I I.
Town hall is extremely transparent. And you start to get the feeling that a community does like to know that they can come, that they can talk, that they can hear and ask questions. You can have your authorities there in a town hall, they can ask questions. So it's a really good format, and it's a good way to start a process to learn what the community really wants.
Yes, sir. Yes, uh, it seems like Thomas here, uh, and others may have, uh, feeling that maybe a majority of the city might be opposed to this, and why would we go down this route? But the thing is, as you mentioned, if you were in the other meeting, you would have the reverse feeling as if a whole bunch of city. So we really don't know what's out there. Uh, as far as, uh, what do other cities do? Just all every others, every city that's around us, where in Dripping Springs, Wimberly, San Marcos. Uh, or basically like Austin or San Antonio, none of them is against above-ground pool. Most city in Texas, uh, provides citizens with that freedom. So it's not, uh, a candid ask uh, in in term of, wow, this is something so unusual. We have to put all this effort and money to figure out what this unusual thing could be allowed to the citizen. Where pretty much most citizens in Texas have that ability. Uh, but yeah, I mean, if if there was, uh, I think if the ninety percent of the people in Wood Creek were very above-ground pool, I still think there's a bunch of people in this this room that will still be opposed to it. Uh, as someone mentioned, they're opposed to in-ground pool. I don't particularly, uh, and pure fault that people who've been elected, uh, to serve us may listen to the city and basically request that, uh, something that is unusual. Having a above-ground pool not be allowed in a city versus a HOA is considered unusual. Uh, should be, uh, all that put out to study, why can't we let our citizens be just like the rest of the other? And to answer Gloria, uh, Kevin was the one who drafted this, uh, version. Uh, Mr.
By council to
Right, right.
Uh, provide a ordinance to PNC for them to discuss and recommend.
So it's council's decision based on whatever.
I was really answering your question.
Yeah, I appreciate that, yeah. I really didn't know who, how the draft came about.
A draft was provided to us.
A draft was provided to you?
Yes, which we reduced into, because it was redundant and repetitive. And, um, and we made it more concise and a little bit clearer.
It was presented to you all by whom?
Council.
Council.
They voted, they voted, uh, all in favor on five, I think it's five zero to to pass it on to PNC.
That's right.
Chairman, there are nine hundred homes here around here.
Okay.
Fifteen people is not enough of quality, okay? We need to have forty, fifty percent of nine hundred people.
Right.
That way, okay, then we can have a better foundation for it. So I I'm not going to proceed with this at all.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. You know, uh, to this point, you know, we're not Austin. We're not Dripping Springs, this is Wood Creek. So it's up to Wood Creek, as to what character we want our community to be, and that would be up to the people of Wood Creek. This is the way I see it. So there just needs to be a mechanism. Uh, you know, if if you were to allow, um, a pool, whether, you know, it just needs to be well done. I mean, I'm sure you can build an above-ground pool that is nice enough that, you know, it would not affect the character of the, but it would probably be a pretty expensive pool with decking and all kinds of things that. And, you know, you can see, cause all of us imagine just that cheap, you know, pool that, and we don't want that. Cause it just, you know, it's it's, uh, just very unattractive. And I just, I'm just saying that, look, there has to be some way to get people's input. Uh, if that's the way you wanna do it, I I mean, that was the whole point of my first conversation was that, well, there's gotta be a better way to introduce, uh, uh, you know, uh, uh, a change to the ordinance. Uh, where where at least you've got a large percentage of the, uh, population. Uh, particularly landowners, uh, you know, in agreeing with that subject. The source really has some backing. I, you know, and, you know, I I agree that, uh, it has to be limited in a way where it's official, like every owner has a vote. And they're identified, it is not being anonymous.
Right, you'd have to have, but I mean, if you really wanted to have something, you'd send one to every house, and enough code on it. And you would send that out, and when the code came back, you'd only get those that that were verifiable with whatever identification that you have on those. Anybody sent out, you know, we sent out nine hundred and two, nine hundred and twelve is when we sent out a public notice. Like, for the, for this, that's how many households gets it, so we would have nine hundred and twelve ballots.
Yeah.
And you would have to track those, and, you know, you only got back twenty-five? Eight, twenty-five people are compared about us. But you know that it would be to those individuals only in the city that would receive them in the bail box to have enough uh, passion about the, about the, uh, ordinance that they would actually send it in.
Let me ask you this, um, I I thought it was a fascinating point that I hadn't thought of about the, um, um, I'm sorry. The, um, impervious cover. So, so a map like this, Kevin, like, do we have something like that that shows? I mean, I I I'm just imagining, oh, yeah, you know, that lot, that lot are green because they're under their thirty percent, you know, I mean, do, is there?
There, that, when when you send in your full permit, there is an impervious cover sheet that you have to fill out. That shows that you're still under thirty percent, even when you're impervious.
I guess, I guess, for what I'm knowing, the the only people that really get a, well, maybe not, maybe that's not true, yeah, okay.
The neighbor.
That's true, yeah, right, we need to check, is is the community, no, it's still a community, uh, part.
Part of the building process, whether you can build a shed, above-ground pool, below-ground pool, uh, whatever, a deck.
My drainage, cause we had to do it.
Right, um, we always have for, we always have for, um, coverage of impervious cover, and we always check that. Uh, because as you know, in our code, impervious cover, I mean, pools are a hundred percent impervious cover. So they take away, so somebody that already has thirty percent, they can't have an in-ground pool, they can't have a shed, they can't have anything else because they got the thirty, they were, they got the thirty percent, unfortunately. Uh, but that is one thing that we, that we would check on and that we do with the, uh.
So, I would like to make a motion.
Hold on.
Okay.
But sir.
Thank you.
Right, right as am.
Well, you know, this is a really big deal to change an ordinance. I've, and it really concerns me that anybody can come up and not like an ordinance that's been in place. And very expensive, you know, we're gonna send out surveys, which I I do agree, everybody needs to have a voice, but is there ways to be more condensed if these are gonna be popping up all the time? Are we gonna be getting surveys going all the time too? Very costly and it's. So I just can't understand really the things that have been in place that we just go willy-nilly, start changing. But I do wanna add one thought I had, I think when you talked impervious cover, we are pretty small lots here, really. And, you know, if you have an above-ground pool, you're sitting, I don't know how high you might sit. You know, really deep one, I I don't know the depth. But then that means my neighbor might be standing up really high on their deck. I don't wanna see that, I don't want them looking down at higher. I know what you're thinking.
So funny. Well, you know.
We've experienced that before.
We we moved out here from the woodlands and, uh, north of Houston. And the guy behind, it was fairly small lot. And the guy behind us had this giant deck sitting up there, and I walked out on my back porch. And there's Ed out there smoking his cigar. Yeah, like he's up, he's up above our back privacy fence.
Yeah, I mean, I really started thinking about that, I don't want a pool up here.
We're trying to grow stuff and grow tall enough and black.
Okay, any other public comments on this? Yes, ma'am.
Um, so I'm I'm just curious, cause I'm still kinda new at this process. And obviously, I'm very passionate about my cowboy pool because I've wanted it for three years. And again, was not given a reason why we couldn't have it, it was just, it's considered an above-ground pool. So my question is, um, as someone that would like to have an alternative presented, because this is something the only other person was the one, um, what is the recommendation? Uh, should I come prepared with more statistical data, pictures, things like that? Because I feel like this is an alternative that is kind of in between what the nay and the yay. And particularly could be a, an option that is doable. But I I just don't know if that's even worth my time or effort, because it sounds like it's either a ground, a above-ground pool or nothing at all.
Um, I'm with me after there, the description of measurements, and you said twenty-four inches?
Um, they come in six, eight, ten, and twelve, uh, but diameter, diameter, two foot, two foot.
So that measurement, two feet, might actually qualify you to have it as, because it's not considered a pool. It might be considered a shing pool.
Because technically, it would be for me and my dogs.
So we'll, I'll do more research, because I know what the number I just researched my back is, is thirty-six inches.
That's what I'm reading, I'm actually, I found the actual definition of the above-ground pool. I think there is a height, I'll, I'll give you my card and we can talk later.
Might give alternatives to people that, you know, maybe they don't wanna go that far with the maintenance and things like that. And we're not talking thousands of gallons of water. Um, heck, if I have to go and get Ozarka and the gallons and fill it up, I'll do it. Um, I, we don't water our yard, we have a big lot, we have probably one of the biggest driveways in Wood Creek. In my yard, if y'all been down there, um. We don't even drink our faucet water, we use it for bathing, and that is it. And that's how we try to contribute back to saving water. So I, you know, when when I wanted it and I was looking at this idea, I just thought it might be something that maybe would be an alternative for those seeking an area to get wet. And maybe drink beverage or something like that, and be rowdy, you know? But it might be an alternative that we could potentially present to those wanting something like this.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
And I would point out that, um, in like, a meeting like this is going to have detractors just because the people that are finding their neighbors having it aren't motivated not to come out here. So something like this, even if it's a survey, people who respond that you're gonna get are going to skew from the communities in general. Because the percentage of people that are just finding whatever their neighbor wants to do is finding them aren't going to show up, meaning aren't gonna reply, you're gonna get just the people that are on.
It was interesting to me, some someone had mentioned like, um, you know, getting signatures or petition or something like that. Like, it would be interesting to me for someone who was in favor of X, Y, and Z, if if if, and and there's not. But if the city said, okay, well, the process for that is, you have to get five hundred signatures from verified Wood Creek people and write down what their address is, so that we can randomly contact some of them and be like, did you really say you're in support of this? And if you brought whatever that threshold is, whatever, then, yeah, you can bring it before PNC or city council. And if you brought whatever that threshold is, whatever, then yeah, you can bring it before P and Z or City Council.
That sounds harder to answer.
There is.
Is it, is it?
Yes, there is.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know if it is, so, i- is it, i- is that a city, like a city procedure?
No, it's not, there is a procedure.
The other side of that is a barrier.
And it's a good idea.
Some of the bring up concern is, well, can't unless you do this way first, so then the good side of that.
Which one's the person right here in this room about the cowboy pool? I mean, basically in order for him, her to have it, if, if, if she didn't have the thirty six inches that would have allowed it. That'd be, she will have to go and try to get, and a whole bunch of people saying, what the heck is this, well, you wanna answer that. Is almost like almost an automatic no under that.
But if she's passionate enough, she's got the passion, I mean, she's showing it to us, she'd be willing to do it, I mean.
I mean, if you.
If I don't want it, I mean, that's all I've got to say.
Well, to make a change to ordinance should require some effort.
Money, cost of city money, staff time to send out these surveys. I mean, it's just a big deal.
Absolutely.
It isn't, just because of what I want to do.
And the last thing that I would point out, we really, Wood Creek is an outlier. And, uh, and I mentioned before, we are one of the only cities that has an ordinance against the above ground. Who cares, since we are not the norm.
Say is, I do not understand people. Who say they love it here, blah, 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 and the first thing they wanna do is change it.
Okay, any other comments?
It's just an alternate, when I bought in here two and a half years ago, I live on El Grande. Nothing was ever handed to me in a pamphlet that says you cannot do this, this and that, so it was unbeknownst to me. I didn't learn about the thirty percent rule until I found out that I couldn't do something. So it's, it's not because I wanna come in and change anything, it's because it wasn't told to me. For a second to me that this is not, these things are not allowed here. When I came from another state and invited to that area, they, uh, before closing, they gave me a, a copy, the C C and ours. That these are the regulations that we have here, you know, if you wanna live here, these, you have to abide by. And then I chose to go ahead and still purchase based on that, I had the choice to do it or I had the choice to move on. But if you don't know what's going on and then you come out and find out you can't be told, you be told that you can't do this, 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 that. You're taking that away from the homeowner who can't enjoy their yard, who can't enjoy their family. And I'm with her all this, this and everything, I just had two dogs that drank the water out of Cypress Creek recently, they both ended up with diarrhea and a bacteria in them. I don't think I wanna be swimming in that, so I want another option for me. And if I can provide some kind of plan that says I would love to do this, I know that they're not the prettiest thing. I am willing to do this, this and that and play all the around that to concede that, will you consider it?
No, um, well, I just. For, for correction and for, uh, accuracy, uh, all our ordinances are online and you can look on those ordinance.
Nobody, nobody told me about that.
All of our, all, all I will say is all of our ordinances and requirements are online for anyone.
Got.
That can look up those ordinance and requirements of the city.
To be fair, what he's saying is why couldn't we have a package? Do, how should we have ordinances? And this lady brought some a very good point, which is you're brand new buying this area. You're not aware how many things is so totally different about this city. Internal of stuff that normally belong in H O A, not in the main city. That'd be not even have a look before you even buy property, oh, by the way, I can't fix my window if someone breaks it. Because I have to fill out a form and see to ask permission to repair a frigging window, oh, I, I may not wanna be here. Uh, to, just to have basically a list of, uh, stuff that are out ordinary would have been very helpful.
Um, I think this has been absolutely wonderful. Say that, thank you so much. I think it's been a great exchange and that's what we've been wanting more and more is since it's opened, this transparency is special. Everyone has an, has an opinion about these things, but if you have an ordinance before you, commissioners. That's already been kind of tweaked a whole lot. And you're gonna keep tweaking an ordinance that maybe people don't even want. Change, no change in that ordinance, and so we, again, part before the horse and that's. All I'm saying, thank you, I want to thank everybody, it's great.
All right, very good. Yes, I am now ending. It is six thirty-five P M, I am concluding and ending the public hearing, uh, to consider this issue. Thank you all for your time and for coming out, uh, again, you're welcome to hang out if you want, or you're welcome to leave at this time.
Okay, sure, thank you, appreciate it.
So can I make motion now?
Uh, okay. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move on to the next item of our regular agenda. Which is to discuss and take action regarding a possible recommendation to City Council to adopt an ordinance.
I would like to make a motion, two-part motion. Two-part motion and we're not poor English, I need some help in there, you know, making it crystal clear about that. My motion is a quality that we table this discussion until a proper polling of all the.
Sorry, I can't hear you, other discussion.
I believe it was, ready?
Yes.
I move that we table this discussion until the city administration have done a thorough. Polling of all homeowners and results are being shared with P and Z. And I also would like to. Recommend to City Council that P and Z in the future will be looped in before any. New ordinances are drafted which pertain to P and Z's area of interest.
I have a point of order, quick point of order, procedural question. His, his motion is, is the table list until City Council provides to P and Z. Is that how it works? It sounded like earlier you said, hey man, if something, if, if something is, is on our agenda, it's incumbent on P and Z. To say, hey, we, we want more information, we, we're gonna put on yellow vests and go knock on doors or we're gonna. Ask city staff to please send out a survey.
Now, City Council would have to approve, uh, putting, putting the survey together or reporting together. And they may deny it for a little.
So, so we, cause as, as the P and C body, you're the one that's still the survey. And you'll be providing that to council, which parts, which, which is sometimes part of your due diligence. Just like if you were to invite people in here for testimony, uh, you would put that testimony in your recommendation that you would send to council. Just go like, survey if you wanted to, and if you had, if you had a, um, town hall. You would describe about the town hall and, you know, you, whenever you make a recommendation, there is a, there is a. I think y'all seen the paragraph or the paragraphs that is, that is. Stint to counsel, not. Not for them to prove it, but for them to receive it, so they will receive a recommendation from P and Z. I'm at P and Z and have the background, which is how did we get here, what did you do, who did you talk to? Uh, to come up with your, which is the next part of the, uh, communication, is the recommendation to councils. So first you say we have town hall meeting and we had a public hearing and. You know, such and such and such and such, we did a survey, this is what it came back to, um. Here is our recommendation based upon our due diligence and then you recommend that to council. Counsel receives that recommendation and they can accept it, they can change it. Or they can do nothing with it, that is the, the process that it goes through.
So just to clarify, I think, I think your, your motion can be to, to table this until we, P and Z. Figure out.
Have court of nine or twelve homeowners.
Or, or whatever, whatever we.
About our motion, I, I don't, I think that's superior to having a town hall meeting, okay? Because then everybody who is a homeowner here has an opportunity to weigh.
Heather, so can you restate your motion for me, just to clarify, is table the right thing?
Boy actually brings up a good point of, so to table. He puts it on this meeting and anyone else could take it off this table. But I think what we said. Okay.
What happened with your English?
Yes.
On that issue, and thank you, Chris.
Because, you know, as a survey, I wanna go make sure that we can do it without council's permission. Uh, but if we do need council permission, it's gonna take a lot longer, um, because it's not on this agenda.
Right.
And so it wouldn't be till the twentieth?
Doesn't take for council permission, doesn't take.
Well, I'm gonna do some background just to make sure, but if not, then we'll have to come up with a, and, and stepping all over your mouth, I'm sorry, but you have to, um.
Make it better.
Yes, and, and, and one thing that. I would like to make clear is what type of survey would you want? Do you want a online survey, do you want a?
He said, oh, like, didn't sign survey and then.
You want the. Okay.
And I would like for us to be able to word the questions or be, you know.
You can write it up and Barbados do us and we will keep putting in the format and the wording and we'll send it out, but, but, but. Does require City Council permission, right?
No, but that's also because administrative in nature and we have it in our motion.
You have a motion.
Because, Andy, you know, as we talked about before, I mean, I'm not here to represent my own ideas. I'm here to try to figure out what majority of, of my neighbors think and then pushing those ideas.
My main question, can you restate the motion?
Please restate the motion.
What have you written down so far?
Uh, well, I got the first one, move the table discussion of the city administration. The first one we brought up and then he started postpone, first table wording and then it went.
Yeah, move to postpone, uh. Discussion about this issue until the proper polling has been conducted and results have been shared with P and Z. Also.
Can, can, can we have two separate motions?
Yeah.
I think you would, it would. You need two separate motions.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So that would be the, the first.
Okay.
And how do you want the polling to get done, you wanna be specific?
No, the nine hundred and two houses. He's gonna allow staff to do it, but they're gonna, uh, provide us the questions that they want. All the citizens, just like we did, I would have put nine twelve.
Mail survey that P and Z is gonna make a question.
Mail polling, he called the polling.
One of that is the second motion.
No, that's the first. Okay, that's the first motion is to, um, so.
One, you need a second, um, two. You would have to approve the language here unless you're kind of approving the language on the mailer at another time. Because you can't create the language outside of an open meeting.
Then you can let staff do it and we'll correct the language.
If, if your motion is. They won't, you know, the ledge.
I want P and C to approve the wording on the polling questionnaire.
Then you won't get that till, that polling would not go out until after the next week.
That's fine with me. So, I mean, to change an ordinance doesn't have to happen overnight.
No, I just wanna make sure that, that everybody is clear on the procedure going forwards. We don't have any questions, what, what you're saying is you want us, P and Z, to write the questions that get sent out.
Yes, and under background too, it, because in previous things, I've been less than happy with some, some of the questions have been asked.
So the motion would be postpone the discussion of the issue until proper polling has been done with a mailed. Poll to all citizens with the questions designed by P and Z. Uh, via staff preparation and P and Z approval on the questionnaire.
Okay.
And that's certainly certain that there's no action on the ordinance.
There is no action.
That's it, I'm sorry.
Uh, you guys, second.
Yeah, the second motion.
Oh, let's hold on the first one. Yeah, hold on the first one and then we'll get the second motion.
Yeah, but, uh, voting on the first one about P and Z creating the questions and sending them out, Commissioner Thomas Palm.
Yes.
Didn't you have a second? Yeah, it was Chris. Commissioner Tamara Robertson, I. Commissioner Chris Sonier, I, Chair Andy Gavin, of course.
So my second motion is based on the fact that we maybe don't wanna waste too much time in the future, so my, my motion is that. To recommend to City Council that, eh, any, uh, that P and C get looped in. Before a new ordinance is drafted which pertains to P and Z's area of interest. Maybe looped in is a bad word.
And, 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 and again, this is just a, a brief discussion.
Yeah.
Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, but, but my, my understanding of your function. Is that you take what happens at City Council that we don't see and you digest it to us. So that, so that we have that information. So I, I feel like, and, and I could be wrong, I could be wrong, but I feel like in this case. When above ground pools was brought to P and Z, instead of it just being like, okay, well, we're supposed to talk about above ground pool. It would have been reported by the Planning and Dining Commission liaison. And that's when you stand up and you say, hey, here's what's been going on for the last two months, we've been getting feedback from citizens about above ground pools. Uh, and because of that, council member Hyance, you know, did some due diligence and here's what she looked at and here's what we came up with, here's kind of what we're thinking. Um, and what we need now is for you guys to just rubber stamp it, or what we need now is for you guys to think about this. We're gonna hand this off to you and then let us know your thoughts and I feel like, i- i- if, if that's your role, I feel like it should be, but, but. I, I feel like that would help accomplish.
It's, it's, so, I.
Yeah.
No.
No, excuse me. The liaison just goes back and only, uh, first of all, I've never heard a liaison going back and reporting on the committees, but. The, what I see is a liaison, it goes back to council and that report, it just says, I attended that meeting. And this is what they decided, there were so many people there, he doesn't provide any details, he doesn't make any analysis.
So what's the point of this?
I don't know, so you, you as the chair. Or the god chair of P and Z can go before the council and provide your report.
Totally.
As to what council does.
But, but, so, but, but, but when it, when it came here, so, so I absolutely agree. So either someone from City Council should have come here and, and made a report to us, here's what we want.
Well, Kevin, probably the manager would have been told and, and then he had.
Or. The liaison, if, if that, I mean, I have no idea.
I don't think that the liaison job has been to monitor and report back and forth between the council and the. And you all.
So.
In any role, there's just such trouble that I've ever known.
That's the passion, passion.
Yes. I'm sorry, what?
So we.
He's a council member who votes, I mean.
Council created a, a liaison four one one that described our roles and as I read them. My position here is pretty hands off, my job is not to influence you in anything you do. But if you ask me questions like, how does that look, how does this work? Those kind of questions I can ask, or what does council as a body think, not what I think, but what is the body think based on their discussion?
Do you have any, do you have any role in, in this instance with above ground pools? Like, do you have any role in helping us understand what council is talking about or what they're thinking?
Other than what they discussed during the meeting, no.
Then, then do you, like, where, where do we get that, where do we get the background?
So, I mean, I don't know, I guess the question I should ask again, maybe to clarify, what do you mean by background information?
So, when I was, when, when I was.
Reaching out to council members and, and. Reaching out to council members and and there is a correction I'll have to make, there there was discussion in the survey comprehensive plan in the comment section. About above ground pools.
Okay.
So it's it's been there.
Some citizen made a comment.
Yes.
Correct, yeah.
But it wasn't. Oh, yeah, no, it's not a survey, my comprehensive. Yeah, so.
I understand.
Yeah, and there are no surveys.
So it's been a discussion and we've been hearing about it. And then there was several people all at once and they showed up at that meeting. And they were all saying, hey, and we hadn't heard anybody saying, we don't want. So we're like, well, okay, let's put this on and then start the process of discussion. And that's all the citizens, we're having a discussion. We're seeing if this is what the people want. We're seeing if what we do, if we if they do whatever, how we want, how they want it done. So the process for us is how we communicate to you without directing you. Is this is the format it would end up in if it was to happen. But that doesn't mean council saying, you need to do it.
But it seems like the communication should have been, hey, city council has been presented by a number of citizens who are interested in above ground pools. Because this is going to be a zoning issue, could you guys look into this?
Yeah, 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 exactly, that's really.
That's what this was.
Okay, then 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 maybe a misunderstanding on my, but 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 when it. Goes up on my agenda is discuss and take appropriate actions regarding uh consideration to adopt an ordinance. To me, and and maybe I'm just not, maybe maybe I haven't, you know, flexed my muscles enough over him, like, well, city council wants me to review this ordinance. Does anybody have any problems with this ordinance? No, okay, well.
So my question, you you said it showed up on your agenda.
Yeah.
Without you?
I. I did not, yeah, I was told that 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 needed to be on our agenda.
Okay, because you do have the power as chair to take councils. The council may say, we want, we're going to send this to you.
Uh huh.
You have the timeframe, that's all in your control. You can go, I don't want this agenda, I'll put it on the agenda or I.
But but the way I even found out about it was that it's on my agenda, like, that's that's the way I found out about it.
Something I'm asking is like, you create your agenda, you as chair create your agenda for this board. With their input.
But how does city council tell me that they're interested in me reviewing above ground pools?
We have them, council has a motion and sends it to you.
Because someone at council decided that they wanted to put it on council agenda. And every council member under the new process of city, every individual council member. Can send any agenda item that they care to send anytime, any way.
Okay, but 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 I'm I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to understand, how does how does council send it to you?
Like, it goes, it gets right in on it and goes.
It gets sent to me and then I put it on your agenda because they direct me to.
Because he had good choices.
But.
I'm very sorry.
Yeah, so we're we're working out like processing, so I think we're good in this discussion, um. Staff does send it to you, but you have the power to run version.
Okay.
Yes.
But this wasn't created, yeah, it's in there, this took hours of somebody's time to make. So why don't we try to avoid spending most of that time until P and C has had a chance to talk about it?
What? It's the one page on page eight. Attachment N, that's what council got. That's all council had, just feels like, you know, the thing collectively said, well, this would be good, this might be good, this might be good.
Well, the one from council made that, didn't they?
Perhaps, yeah, they they've been like.
This on page eight was not from council, I do actually have work on that, I confused it. Yeah, they provided me the. So 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 council, council worked on it and and then and then Kevin to put this on my agenda, right? I mean, that's how.
Yeah, we, so we were going to send this idea, just like, these are the thoughts we've all, council as a whole came up with.
Okay.
And it went to you.
Again, I'm just trying to figure out the process, like, the first time I thought is when I put it up on my agenda, so and and Kevin was directed to put it there, so he put it on agenda. So I'm I'm just trying to figure out, like, when I see a week ahead of time, when Sue Nancy said, hey, do you have any agenda items? Do I email her back and say, yeah, I've got this and this, what what has Kevin put on my agenda? And then I say, no, take that off, I don't want to talk about this.
So that's.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Do you understand that or?
The the correct process is, um, council voted to send it to P and Z, okay? That all always said, send this.
Okay.
And. Then staff would say, okay, or I as a liaison would say, hey, this is what council has decided, where they're sending this document or sending this thing for you.
Idea.
Idea.
Okay.
And you as a chair decide which when agenda, you know, you can just not take it up for months. And council at some point might go, hey, you know, but they didn't always say, you know, months ago, you know, they they had, they can step back and go, hey, could you?
Amen.
Consider it again or.
But 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 by send, the 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 definition of send is council directs city manager, city manager somehow communicates with me. And the way he's communicating with me right now is is.
Is the draft ordinance.
But he was directed, I think he was, I think he was. But yeah, you're right, yeah, we do.
Then you can come back.
Did we, yeah, we need to vote, thank you, you're welcome, we need to, we need to close, close what you said for for your motion and then we can.
Getting rid of this, okay, so what what do you have here?
Uh, sorry, Commissioner Palm, what I have is that uh any recommendations you're recommending to council. That any ordinance affecting P and Z uh gets P and Z looped in for the ordinance that drafted.
When it changed ordinance or new ordinance, I'm not sure which is proper wording there. Or ordinance related activities maybe, instead of looped in or.
Yeah, that's, well, that's what, that's what started the discussion. Now, now I suspect, we're trying to define, what does looped in mean, how does council communicate with with P and D and I I I don't know, I know what's happening right now.
So it are, so we, so council has also had the discussion of, um, council has a liaison for which is about communication towards committees. And we're also wondering, well, we we need communication like a program or an understanding of how council or committees communicate back to council. So we're actually trying to work out these kind of policies because we don't.
We we today, we have some, we have some guys on and. So, go ahead, go.
Okay, P and C.
Hold on, Tom, hold on just one second, so let him finish with.
Our role together, major, with the liaison for the chair, is. When you get prepared for a meeting and you're going to create an agenda. You creating an agenda, we have discussions, you go, hey, this is what I'm going to put on it.
You and I have a discussion.
You and I have those discussions, okay?
Not with the council manager.
Listen.
Take that to your manager.
Please let it finish. Um, so this is, these are the things you're going to put on the agenda, go, oh, I can see some documents that might help with that idea. Or these documents, background documents for your patent. And it's just about facilitating your discussion on your agenda item. Then you present them to city staff, you submit your agenda.
Okay, I'll I'll I'll.
Think about.
I'll do some research into this, we 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 can't solve this issue right now, I think, but 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 literally needs more research, from my understanding, you you probably have some knowledge to maybe me and we can.
Yes.
So we we will figure out what that means, uh, um, Commissioner Palm, for you, we 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 just need to figure out, um.
The verbiage.
The verbiage, exactly, so so I I think the spirit of your um uh motion is is. Understood by all of us, I just think we need to make sure that that gets communicated effectively, that gets written down effectively, so.
The recommendation to council that any ordinance affecting P and Z get P and Z. Alternate looped in for an ordinance is drafted.
Allow P and C to discuss. Any changes to ordinances prior to them being drafted. Maybe.
Um, I I it, I I'm not sure that would, that would have caught this because it was presented as a different ordinance, but but. That that wouldn't catch if someone just goes to the city council and says, I I wanna, I wanna do X, Y, and Z, and the city council says, okay, well.
We pass it on to P and Z.
But not in the form of an ordinance, I mean, they they just, they just need to convey.
Public uh request, public question. Some kind of, because again, when I get something, I'll tell you that, I'll tell you that, I'll share, I feel that it's. It's a done deal, our job is only to look at the finer bit, that's how I feel when I see proposed ordinance like that, you're telling me that's wrong, we can totally ignore it if we want to. So it just means my misunderstanding, misunderstanding, I guess, so.
No, mine mine too, it 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 was something that was put on my agenda and it was presented as, hey, we want you guys to.
Yeah.
If you don't have a good reason.
I heard something, somebody just said, may I be recognized? I've heard somebody saying that they were instructed to hurry. Did you not tell me, say, hurry this up, no?
Yes. They wanted it done in a month, I said, and we said no, and I said no, that they were going to have their meeting. And then they were going to set up the um public hearing and recommend it to you and then. So the council can have their public hearing.
Next week.
Afterwards, is that not correct in your mind, Chris?
They're like shaking their heads, I just want to listen. There was discussion and. About the possibility of above ground pools. Um, you stepped in and started this timeline going, well, the fastest we could do this, and that kind of changed the trajectory. And I turned to the city secretary and said, well, what is the best, what are the things that this happened and this happened? And but we never actually. It wasn't part of the the motions of council.
No, it was not a motion of council, but that was the discussion.
But motions of council are the action. Yes, they are, and they're voted on, you're exactly right.
Amy, may I ask you a question?
You may.
In reading your minutes from your May meeting, it appears that y'all had this before the commissioners in May. So the fact that it was on your agenda this time is a little bit confusing to me because you already had looked at it.
Uh, again, this may be a misunderstanding, but it appeared on our agenda last time. Um, and and the sentiment in the room was, hey, review this and and if you're okay with it, approve it. And we said, hold on, let's let's do some, let's do some research, let's think about this.
Okay.
So so I called Aqua Texas, I came up with a bunch of questions, I drafted some some thoughts about it, I don't know if anybody else did because. Communicating with people is difficult.
Uh huh.
Um, and then the the intention for today was, okay, let's hear from the public. And what have you guys learned, you know, since our last meeting about this, um, is this, that that was the agenda quite here today.
Okay.
And and since, yeah, and then since, um, you know, we've gotten into some more procedural questions because a lot of people are scratching their heads saying. I don't understand the procedures, well.
Thank you for that part of the question.
Well, maybe we can make it easier, and if if you and Kevin. Understand what we're trying to achieve here, maybe you shouldn't have a motion, but yes. Sort of inform the, tell your city council members that, you know, let's not go this round, let's just. More informally pass on citizens' requests to the P and C and let them. Come up with a proposed ordinance if it's so deemed. Necessary.
Hmm.
Instead of both through his motions, it obviously became drafted properly at this point in time. Could you do that, you think? Since your liaison, I mean, you know, I mean, we're we're trying to work out processes in the background to make communications so that.
However, a council member is not to influence this commission.
Correct, sure.
So you two communicating is a problem.
So.
Liaison to your chairman.
To to clarify, what I said is he's presenting an agenda item. The chair is presenting an agenda item, my role as liaison is to look at the the agenda item and go, hey, I know of other documents. Like legal documents or documents that maybe council had discussed when they sent something and then you never got. Say, hey, this should be included in your packet. And these are documents, these are not opinions, these are not, I'm not trying to sway, I'm walking that line really closely.
Tom, I'm.
May I make a clarification?
Uh, yeah, yeah, okay, go.
Just quickly, I'm sorry, but it just, these things I think about. I don't see the role of the liaison, and I'll read your, all the documentation on what you all wrote, it's your job. But I'm very concerned that you would participate in an informational providing status. And a background providing status with the chair as a council member doing research for the.
No, I'm not doing research, so what I'm talking about.
Well, I know what you, what you said a little while ago.
What if, what if, would it be, would it be different, let me, let me just throw this out there, would would it be different? Um, let let's just say that council member Heinz was was the the author of this. Issue, this document, okay, I I don't know, but but that's what it felt like, so let's just think, what if, what if P and Z said, hey, man. If anything comes from city council, whoever that belongs to, they gotta show up at this meeting and present it, like, does that?
That's true, absolutely, that's exactly the way it works.
Yeah, well.
You got through another council member on every one of your items where they're participating, participating in your deliberations and in your thoughts and in your processes. The liaison to do that, they hit the report is that they go back to council, the the arms length activity is they go back to council and say.
It is usually done.
Exactly.
And the city manager comes to the board meeting, does what the boards, um, and interacts with them. Then they go to council and say, P and Z did this, P and Z did that, that way you have a separation of powers. Liaison, where they actually have council members on committee, so, you know, there's, we're not on a meeting. You're lia- liaison to the meeting in the boardroom at the dice.
Yes.
We're not, I was.
And you're offering to make input and give the research and provide it around every agenda coming.
You can repeat it all you want, all I said was, I'm providing documents to an agenda item that maybe council had sent to you.
Why would you be giving that? We have a man in charge of that.
Okay, well, let's, well, let's keep the discussion.
I personally don't have a part, the more information we have in there is far as I'm concerned, and I, I'm not big on this, you know, separation of power, I mean. If he has the information, which helps us move forward with this, I'm happy to have him here. And so I'm not too concerned about that aspect, but the, again, let's go back to my motion, should we make a motion or should we forget about making a motion?
If you want to put some tea to it, you should make a motion and and I think, um, things that we, whatever we decide now, it it may not work. You know, next month, we may be like, well, that didn't work, but but clearly we need information, if if something is being passed off from city council to us. It needs to be presented and we need the background information, whether that comes through the liaison, whether that comes from whoever is in charge of it at at council. Uh, whether that comes through Kevin, I don't know that we care as long as it's unbiased. You know, information, but 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 we need that right now, I feel like we're not getting it, right? So I I don't care where it comes from, but but we have to, that's the ask, is, hey, city council, figure out a policy or a procedure. Whereby we can get information so that we can do our job, because right now we're not completely sure what we're getting.
Right. Okay. Kevin, again, what did I say?
You're making a recommendation to council that any ordinance affecting P and Z uh that, to allow P and Z. To discuss any changes to the ordinance prior to. There being an ordinance drafted.
What do you think, um, possibly, um. Or changes to existing or creation of new.
Yeah.
Changes to existing or.
Creation of new.
And that can be running in a, because you didn't raise this, so, or that's how you want it, spend a minute.
True.
Yes. Oh, this is, no such thing as a friendly reaction.
Alright, it's unfriendly.
There is, we can argue that later, so who's the second?
Can you, can you, can you read it? Can you, can you, can you read it to them on the time?
Let me figure, and, and it would be. Okay. Recommendation to council that any changes to existing or creation of new ordinances. Uh, allow P and Z to discuss any changes prior to there being an ordinance drafted.
Does that, it's a bit clunky, but I think we've, we've just, that it is probably, I just go down, alright? But yes.
So the second would be. Commissioner Howard. Aye. Commissioner Chris Sonier.
Aye.
Sheriff person, Andy Gavin.
Aye.
Commissioner Thomas Palm.
Hmm, aye.
Right, very good. Any other discussions, lack motions related to this before I close this item out? Okay, great, we are done with the regular agenda then, are there any announcements that anyone has for P and Z?
Good job.
Okay, in that case, we, uh. Adjourned, well, I guess we need a motion to adjourn, how we just adjourned, so someone make a motion to adjourn, they can do adjourn. And, and second, okay, the meeting is adjourned at seven eleven here.